Right.
That's good.
Right. Call the order. We'll stand and we'll do, oh, make sure our phones are off. If you have a new one, you don't know how to do it, turn it off. We'll stand and we'll do the pledge again. Let Jane lead us in the pledge.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do roll call. Here.
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 Here. Okay, we'll do recognitions.
No recognition.
Reports. The president's report, I do not have one. Superintendent's report.
I'd like to thank, first of all, the Board of Education and the community for allowing the meeting to be moved to the third Tuesday of July this year. And I'd also like for the Board to consider maybe making this a regular practice. You know, working with the township treasurer and depending on where the Fourth of July holiday falls, it's hit or miss on whether or not we're going to get our financials. Also, Kristen and I, I have to use my vacation days by the end of June. So that, usually that last week of June, I'm taking time off. Kristen uses, has to use hers by the end of July. So we're trying to squeeze everything in and it just might work a little better if we made it a better, a common practice to do the third Tuesday in July. All right, so that's just something to consider. We don't, we have a, we have a long time before we have to consider the board meeting calendar. Curriculum advisory council, no update. Facilities advisory council, we met back in June. The pool has reached substantial completion. We actually had occupants in there today. We had the Riverside Day campers swimming. We had bullets practice this morning. We had bullets practice this afternoon. It's newly painted. Wes and I did a little tour, walked through this morning. We're just trying to finalize a few punch list items and finalize the test and balance report. The overall airflow is meeting the required number of CFMs that was originally designed for. It's just that we're trying to balance out how much are coming off the pool deck and how much are coming from the return vents that are above the pool deck. Finance advisory council, tentative budget was in your package for tonight's meeting to, for approval. Again, this is the first step, is approving a tentative budget. Then we'll have time to review it again in August. And we'll also have time to finalize it before we approve it in September. But you noticed that from the, the original copy that you received at the June meeting for a first read and then what Kristen presented tonight and what she'll go through there. As we've already found some areas where we made a few reductions. Personnel advisory council, no update. Tonight after closed session, we'll approve a lot of the sponsors and coaches and assistant coaches. So that's a long list of people that will be approved tonight after closed session. Policy advisory council, met before the summer school graduation today. And we went through and made a few minor changes to the press packet that you received in the, in your board packet. And we will provide those recommendations for the August meeting and approval at the August meeting. Purchase or lease of land advisory council. Tonight you'll see a, a letter of engagement for a consulting group that we're looking to work with, Westbrook Consulting, to help us look at our opportunities and options as we continue to try to work out a deal with the forest preserve and zoo. And that's just an hourly engagement as we need their services. And that's just to help us navigate through some of the county channels and to make sure we're, you know, getting in front of the right people and presenting to the right people and making sure we're doing everything that we need to do. Correct. And that's it from the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you very much. Principals' report, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, honorable board members of District 208. Here's the principal's report and updates of the great things happening at RB District 208. AP results are in and the results are outstanding. During the 2018-2019 school year, RB facilitated 23 advanced placement exams. For 12 subjects, RB's pass rate was higher than the state of Illinois's pass rate. We had 1,554 test given, test takers, and 1,015 passed exams for an overall passing rate of 65%. I would like to congratulate former principal and new assistant superintendent Christine Smatena for her leadership, the admin team, teachers, and students for the high achievement. And also in recognizing the teacher, I'm so proud that so many teachers are working in the summer, moving the curriculum forward. And that's how you get results. In addition, RB has halted a plethora of camps for almost all sports during the summer. These camps have created the conditions for the faculty and myself to build positive relationships with our students. I have personally met and greeted the football team, boys and girls cross-country, girls soccer cheerleaders, girls gymnastics, girls volleyball, and boys tennis. And for boys tennis, this Friday, July 19th, from 4:00 a.m. and Saturday, July 20th, from 10:00 to finish, the tennis team will be hosting a fundraiser tennis tournament. Thirty-five for singles and thirty for doubles. For more information, please email Coach Sam Weiss at W E I S S S at R B H S 208 dot net. I will be playing in the Friday night tournament. So if any of you guys would like to join me, I'm not a tennis player. I'm just going to do my best, but it's in support of our teachers, our coaches, our community, and our students.
Playing singles or doubles?
Singles. Also, residency days are July 18th, the 24th, and the 29th, from 12:15 to 8:00 p.m. Parents are encouraged to make appointments on the residency tab found on our website at W W W dot R B H S 208 dot net. Residency days are for existing families only. If you are new to the district, please contact Collette Busemi at 708-442-7500, extension 2110. And lastly, I would like to highlight my journey in working with the great stakeholders of this community. I had the honor and privilege to be the keynote speaker at Kamara Middle School graduation. I got to meet my incoming freshmen for the first time, and they're hungry for learning. So proud of them. And shout out to Principal Dr. Gold, who's doing a great job with those young men and women. I had the honor and privilege to march with the students at the Brookfield Independence Day Parade, where I believe I've seen a few of you board members there. It was a hot day, but a well worth day. Doesn't matter what day, we should always celebrate America. Fantastic day. I had the privilege to meet with Principal Kim Hefner from Hollywood Elementary. I introduced myself to the neighbors. We're going to be sharing a space together, so I got to know Kim a little. I had the pleasure to meet with Principal Ryan Evans from S E G Middle School. I had the pleasure to meet with Principal Abramahy from Howser Junior High. I've also had the honor and privilege to meet with my superintendent, assistant superintendent, where I learned the policies and procedures of District 208, when more importantly, how things are run here and why we've been excellent thus far. I've had a chance to meet with the assistant principals, where we discuss standing in curriculum and instruction, student services, climate and culture, and student activities. And lastly, right before I was officially hired, in April, I discovered that RB is proud of opportunities, academics, strong relationships among the stakeholders. This is a great place to be. This is a great school. Every single board member should be proud that RB is one of the top high schools in the state of Illinois. And I want to thank my assistant superintendent and superintendent for being great mentors. Thank you.
You have to have that energy now, every board member. There you go. You set the standard. Assistant superintendent report. Be dead.
I was going to start with my report, but not that.
As you talk about funds, finances.
My table has some people mean not. And yes, my, my table is also slanted, so. So I have several financial reports for the month of June, as well as fiscal year 19 as a whole. So on Board Book page six, we will start with a monthly summary report. The total revenue for the month was $428,223. And of that, 41% came from general state aid, or which is now evidence-based funding, and 13% came from real estate taxes. The other category that comprised 29% of our revenue consisted of a variety of local fees, such as summer camps, summer school, pay-to-participate athletics, course fees, technology fees, et cetera. The total expenditures for the month were just over $2 million, with 51% going towards salary and benefits and 29% going towards our debt payments of bond and interest. On the bottom of that sheet, you'll see the operating fund balances for the school year. So we finished the school year with a fund balance for our operating funds, a little over $13 million. And this is after we were removing the restricted 2.95 million in working cash that has been reserved. And so what this mean, we have, as a result, we have an operating fund balance as a percent of operating expenditures at the end of fiscal year 19 of roughly 52.54%. And this number means that without receiving any additional revenue, we can operate for roughly 52% of the school year. So that's why it's important to look at this number. We also have a board policy that says that we should keep it above 35%.
Kristen, on your page six, you did highlight, so after 12 months, we finished with 101% of budget?
Yes, so I'll explain that more in the subsequent pages.
Okay.
Thank you for the improving the reports. I like it. Thank you. So on page seven, this goes into our fund balances for fiscal year 19, as well as then the following two pages kind of provide an explanation of why. So page seven are our fund balances, and you can see that we finished the year in our operating funds with a surplus of $530,310. And this is considering the working cash transfer of $50,000. Without considering that, we have a surplus of roughly $580,000. And anytime we do a working cash transfer, we always report out on both numbers, since we're transferring it from an operating fund to the, typically the capital projects fund.
Tom, that answers the question you submitted.
It does, but that comes out of the three million restricted fund?
Correct, that's why.
So the restriction doesn't apply?
Right, we, the board originally budgeted $200,000 to do any kind of like design or if there was any preliminary studies, there was a talk about doing a traffic study with the zoo. And so we were going to, we budgeted to withdraw $200,000. We only transferred 50 at first. So that's how you would get the 580, 310 that you originally.
Got it. And so when we move forward and we're talking about surpluses and deficits, we typically refer to the number without considering the working cash transfer. So that would be the 580. So this number is significantly higher than the deficit that was projected in the fiscal year 19 budget, which was without the working cash transfer, a deficit of $231,372. So the following two pages kind of explain why we came in significantly above where we were expecting. So on page eight is a summary of our revenues. And you'll see when looking at our operating funds, as a whole, our revenue came in at 101% of our budget for our operating funds. And this is due to some interest on investment came in higher than we expected, corporate personal property replacement tax, evidence-based funding. We received funding for this year, and then we also had a payment for the previous year of $75,000 that we weren't expecting, and then also refunds on pool liability insurance. Is, is the debt service paid quarterly, monthly, or what's the frequency of that? I'm not quite sure. I'd like to look into that. So what was the total EBF? Our initial EBF was 1.91, I believe, and then we had an additional 75. Looking at page nine, our expenditures. You can see our operating fund expenditures came in at 97.5%. And so in looking at why this came in significantly under budget, there were some changes to salary and benefits due to staffing changes after the budget had been created. Paid services came in significantly under budget. That's things such as Ladsy, our special ed cooperative, legal services, food service. Supplies and transportation also came in under budget. This isn't typical. Last year, we did a historical analysis, and typically our expenditures come in at 99% of what we had budgeted. So that's, I think, one of the main reasons between that and obviously the little bit of revenue, why we ended with a surplus in such a swing. Also, in Board Book underneath my report, on page 10, is the report that's called the Statement of Revenues and Expenditures. It's for the month of June. And this report just provides some additional information for the board. It lists all the revenues and expenditures for the month by each line item, and you can compare it from the budget amount to the actual amount. This month is especially helpful since it provides the year-to-date amount. And then lastly, on Board Book page 40, there is a monthly student activity account summary. And this is also for June 2019. And with this report, it's important to keep in mind that as you're looking at the numbers, a negative account balance actually represents a positive fund balance. That concludes my report. Are there any additional questions?
Good job, Kristen. Good first report.
Thank you.
All right. I got through this pretty fast today.
Yeah, thanks for jinxing us.
All right. FOIA request.
I believe there was one FOIA request on 6/12/19, requesting verification was updated email address of the FOIA officer response was emailed.
Is there a statement? Okay. There's no, is there a statement? I will skip that. Additional discussion items. To point the meeting board education members may request to add additional discussion items. To the left?
No.
To the right? Best agenda action items, approval of minutes.
Sure. Okay. Resolved at the Board of Education, Township High School, District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on June 11th, 2019, open and close, as presented and amended in the July 16th, 2019 Board Agenda Packet.
Jane is the second. Oh, yep.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Resko?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, old business action items, life safety items, capital improvements.
As I stated in my facilities report, substantial completion is done. We're just doing final punch list items. And it looks very bright in there, the white ceiling, all the new paint, the new duck work. It's a little louder, but you know it's working. We have two units now moving the air. And so, like I said, the first week of occupancy, things, that kind of would seem, things seem to be going very well.
Great to hear. Tentative budget.
Kristen presented a first read in June. She'll go through the tentative budget tonight. She'll highlight a couple of key changes from June to July. And then there were a few questions submitted. She'll make sure she points those out. But overall, the deficit has decreased to 646 for next fiscal year. And so I'll let Kristen go through her presentation and then talk a little bit to the board.
Yeah, so after updating the budget with the June 30th actuals, we looked through every individual line item to see what our actual expenditures were and where we could decrease, decrease some expenditures, but also increase revenues. So in order to reduce the deficit, where we started to get it down to 646, we increased revenues such as corporate personal property replacement tax, special education reimbursement, as well as local revenues, which consists of things like age group gymnastics, pay-to-participate for athletics, some line items like that, that were local fees that came in higher than normal. We relooked at the three-year average. And then we decreased expenditures such as paid services. So for example, legal services came in probably $30,000, $35,000 under budget this year. We don't anticipate needing more services than what we got this year, so we decreased that line item significantly. As well as special education transportation came under salaries and based upon new hires. There was a question about that. So when we build a budget, we don't really have a clue as to who we're hiring at that point. So we put in the most expensive situation, family insurance and an employee with a master's degree. And then we go in and modify once we actually hire someone to update those. What do we consider a seat or a workstation worth? I'm sorry. How much, what do we consider a seat or a workstation of worth? Like a person? So for a teacher? Yeah. We budget $60,000, and then we also budget for the family insurance as well.
So roughly 80?
About 80, okay. And then non-capital technology, we were able to reduce that budget. And we're in meeting with the director of technology to finalize things. We realized there was an error, so that reduced that particular line item by $20,000. And then there were a few other questions that were submitted. So the school budgeting process is typically conservative on the revenues and more realistic on the expenditures. That's a very traditional and typical practice among school districts, especially in this area. We don't have the revenue number, so we're always estimating what our revenues are going to be whereas we know what our expenditures are. The substitute budget is based on a three-year historical information. It was high this year for teachers as a whole, but then on top of that, we also had additional FMLA leaves and maternity leaves, which are hard to anticipate. And it's also important to note that the board negotiated some new contract language that will take into effect this school year, that we hope will encourage better teacher attendance. And then lastly, there was a question about special education purchase service. So this is a little confusing. The cost is staying the same for Ladsy, which is our special ed cooperative. But what is happening is this is the first year that a federal grant needs to pass through the district. And so it's the IDEA grant, and so it used to go directly to the special ed cooperative. So it looks like our expenditures have gone up, $270,000. But if you look at a different line item in the revenue, we're also getting that money in. So Ladsy isn't costing us any additional money. It just looks like the expenditures have gone up significantly. Upon board approval tonight, the tentative budget will be posted on our website so that anybody in the community can view it, as well as it will be available in the business office. As Dr. Skinka said, we'll review it again in August. And I have a few other additional line items that I need some more time to look into. Our goal is to try to decrease that deficit a little more if we can. And then the final fiscal year budget will be approved in September. Are there any additional questions?
So maybe, just, I think the answers were very good. But just to clarify, on Board Page 68, which is the significant expenditure assumptions. So every, every time where you indicated that it's cost neutral, it doesn't really affect the operating budget performance, correct?
Correct. So with that special ed line item, I was trying to explain that that increase was cost neutral because we're getting it on the revenue side.
Because now the grant will come through our revenue side.
Okay.
Same thing with food service. You notice that usually the revenue that, it comes in on the revenue side and it comes in on the expenditure side. So like in the FY19 budget, we had over $400,000 budgeted for food service expenditures. Remember, we serve as a pass-through. We, we do the satellite lunch programs for several local school districts in the area. And so if the amount of expenditures didn't come through, it looked like we were a percent, you know, almost a full, half a percentage point lower on our expenditures, but we were also a half a point lower on the revenue side as well. So it was an offset. What I would say to the board is, you know, last year, we went through this and we did a five-year historical. And the school district is usually within 98.5 to 100% of expenditures. And we usually end up budgeting light on the revenue side, which is why we've had some swings, like where we're projecting a deficit and we finish with a surplus. This year, we had some increase in investments, and Kristen went through the list of things. But we were projecting a $230,000 deficit. We finished with a $530,000 surplus, right? So it's a $700,000 swing. And for the first time in a long time, it wasn't because we got an influx of property taxes at the last minute, right? We only were 1% over what we budgeted. We had 101% of revenue. So really, it was because our expenditures came in less than what we had planned. So the thing I would say to the board, this year's budget is looking at a $600,000 deficit. I think we need to commit ourselves to looking and making sure we're, we're looking at all the alternatives and having some plans in place. But I think it's important on a monthly basis, when Kristen reports out expenditure reports, we really see how we're tracking. Because the one thing we don't want to do is create a panic and start pushing the panic button and, and look at making significant expenditure reductions, and then all of a sudden, we finish with another surplus, right? So we want to try not to impact the learning environment. We want to make sure we're continuing to provide the services and resources we've had for the students and the community and the teachers. But we also want to make sure we have some options available to us. So next year, if we do end up having a deficit, or the deficit is what we're projecting, we can, you know, make some reductions or look at some things and have some options. And so that's what I'm going to do as a superintendent and work with Kristen, is try to continually, once we approve this budget, starting in October, November, start looking at attendance or enrollment projections, looking at some staffing options, looking to see if there's anything out there with other grants, resources from the state or federal government, so that we, we have a plan in place before we have to approve next year's budget. The good news is finishing with a $530,000 surplus and then projecting a $600,000 deficit, it's almost a wash, right? We're not tapping into our fund balance to pay off this deficit or lower the fund balance and even more to pay off the $600,000 deficit. So we should finish FY '20, right where we were projecting to finish FY '19, which is somewhat, is good news, right? So I know when you get, you get a little sticker shock, believe me. I've heard it from Wes on a weekly basis, when he meets with me, what am I doing to work with Kristen to lower the deficit? And I think from, from last month, we've lowered it almost $100,000, close to $100,000. We were at 750.
150.
So we're moving in the right direction.
So when do we start to have the conversation to start to consider some different kind of structural changes or models that might contribute to lowering our deficit? Like not requiring everybody to be here for seven periods or?
I think we start laying out those options late fall, early second semester. The first thing we'd want to do is look at enrollment projections, see if there's any dips in enrollment, and if that will have a direct correlation on our staffing needs and if we can lower any staffing thing without impacting class sizes or class offerings. And then I would say we look at a list of a couple of different options. I know the board, several years ago, when we went through the deficit, when I first got here in 2011, we had a couple of options. So we can resurface some of those options and also see if there's other things that people would like to have the administration investigate. But I don't think we should do any of those steps until we see where our final budget is, until that final budget gets approved. That will be in September. And then I think we take it, we start with the enrollment projections and we start with the staffing. And then we would see what the cost impact of that would be. Remember, now next year for FY '21, our financial projections had the deficit being rather low because we do have some retirements coming off the books. So, you know, we were supposed to have a deficit at 19. We finished with a $500,000, roughly a higher than $500,000 surplus. Projecting a $600,000 deficit here. So I think it's important, we give this budget a few months to see how we're trending before we really start making any drastic changes.
I'm just saying that because as we start to look at different models or moving ahead in the future to offer different options, either vocational or different educational options, it could be parallel, like hand in hand. None of that happens quickly.
Sure.
So we start to talk about it now. It might also help with budgeting, but then we can implement it not out of crisis mode, but thoughtfully.
Sure, I would agree.
Right. I think, what I think, I think we'll start in the fall.
I think, what I think, I think we'll start in the fall, but, but with the student numbers, we, you know, we, we intentionally, we know there's a bubble coming through the next couple of years, so we know that we hired two new te, two additional teachers this year to keep our ratios at the 25 to 1, and we know that goes away.
It should stay flat for at least a year or two, maybe even dip.
And we knew that we had enough reserves, so to speak, to, to carry that, right?
Correct.
And that was, because we know, you see, the numbers are going to go back down, and we've got retirements to offset that number, come through attrition, coming in four years.
Correct.
So there's things like that that we have to look at as well, too, and know that that's an intentional board decision.
But I, I think to Laura's point is, is very sound, and that I think, kind of combining what Kevin and Laura both said, you know, we need to be looking at this as a new board member, right? More, a deep dive on more quarterly basis, instead of waiting for the annual budget process.
Right.
Certainly, there was some conservative budgeting going on, which is always how I err on the side of, so I was very pleased to see the deficit become a surplus, no one's, that, that was good news, but then how do we look at that next year? We may not be in the exact same position, because there is more of an art than a science to some of these categories, to everyone's point. So I think, you know, perhaps as we, we get through this budget, it's adopted, and then we really start drilling down, especially I think for the, the new members in particular, like drilling down to what these buckets and these categories are, it's going to be so important to inform any meaningful discussion about where the spend actually happens.
I would agree.
There are also places that are not close to kids that we can look at instead of staffing, which would be like energy costs and some things like that, to make sure that, right, that kind of money's being spent most efficiently, so lots, lots to look at.
Yeah, and I, I wanted to maybe add to what Deanna just said, so, so we, it's very clear this is a budget, right? I mean, this is the best guess, completely understand that, but as I was sort of trying to make sense out of it, the different, the fundamental reason we have a $600,000 issue, potentially, is that the revenue increase this year compared to last is about 1.6%, where expenses are like 5.9 or whatever. And I do recall that we had a discussion at one of the prior board meetings where we said, you know, there is additional expense for special education, a trend that more students use more services, that's all good, but unless I'm reading it incorrectly, I don't think that's the full story, because there's also additional, you know, if I look at the expenses by program, the cost for the high school, and I combine it with administration, I mean, there's about a, close to a million dollars there, more compared to last year, and then there's about 575 for special education. So all I'm saying, I, I don't even know if I'm reading it entirely correctly, but what I was thinking is that it's almost like if I'm a member of the community, a taxpayer, if I had sort of like the dashboard that tried to explain, why is the difference, why are we potentially looking at a deficit? Is there a way to explain it in the simplest and most accurate terms? And it's a combination of the special education costs, it's also a matter of the new contract that we negotiated, that, that we agreed to.
Sure.
And so all I'm saying is that in the, in the interest of transparency and also just sort of setting a, a new, not a new standard necessarily, but a standard where we track this and explain it very simply and accurately now, and then we see, you know, whatever happens thereafter, but with the long-term view of a couple of years from now, are we going to have to go back at some point with a referendum or not? I feel it's very important that we have a very crisp and hopefully very straightforward explanation of what happened. That, that's all. And I, I certainly don't have that right now, but I think that would be something to try to achieve.
Great complaint. All right, so more discussion, this is good, that's a good discussion. We need a resolution to post it, we need to, this resolution is just to post it.
Right.
Make it public.
I resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves and adopts the tentative budget containing estimates of amounts available in each fund for said school district for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, and be it further resolved that this tentative budget, following adoption by this Board of Education, shall be made conveniently available for the public for inspection for at least 30 days prior to final adoption thereof at the September 10, 2019 Board Meeting.
Second.
Any, any last, any discussion about what we?
Mr. Reska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seera?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Saylor?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. All right, then we'll move to the district goals, mission, vision, and mission and vision, which, which is, which is the second part of the whole budget, right? That drives a lot of what we'll go talk about this next year.
Right, and so the Board is scheduled for September 19th to do a Board self-evaluation, and then the second part of that will be a community stakeholder, try to get establishing value statements and re-establishing the district goals, so that should be taking place this fall. The IASB representative, Perry Hill, who was in charge of the school board's region, is moving on to a different district. Mary Ann followed up with the IASB for West Cook, and they have not found his replacement yet, but they still have our date reserved for September 19th to do the Board's self-evaluation. They cover that right, Mary, or is there anything else I'm missing?
No.
All right, um, consideration of adding a student to the board member?
And I think we've talked about allowing that to play itself out as we do the board goal, new board goals and mission.
Okay. The new business, payment of bills.
There are no questions submitted, but you'll notice that there is a new format, so there's a new format and an old format, depending on, some were, you know, in the old system and some are, were processed in the new system. You'll see the new bills list is very lengthy, there's a lot of white space, and the new bills list begins roughly on page 109 of Board Book. And so just a few pointers, as you're looking at the new bills list, if you look on the left, you'll see the vendor, and you'll see a description, and if for some reason that doesn't provide enough information, you can always look to the right of the page, and you should see which account it's coming out of, so that should be helpful. But also, in the future, if there's something you feel like it's not descriptive enough, please let me know, because in our new system, we can add more characters and we can certainly expand upon that description for you. I will just say in general, this is an expensive bills list. In July, we typically pay for a lot of our paid services for the year, so LADZI's for the year, Airmarks for the entire year, we get a discount from Airmark if we pay, if we pay in July, so that's why this bills list is a little more expensive.
And how are you finding the new software?
You know, I, I have not had years of experience in the old software, so I really enjoy the new software, but I do know it is a bit of an adjustment, but tomorrow, we are training all of the administrators, as well as the 12-month support staff, and so that they can access their own accounts and submit things online, which is something that we've never had before, so that's a huge improvement, so I think in the long run, it's going to be a lot better than the old system that we had.
Yeah, so the business office won't, it won't all have to pass through your staff, right? Like people can do it on their own?
Yes, it will, it will pass through us in terms of approving it online, but papers, yes.
Very basic of like data entry, right?
Yes, correct.
They can all do it on their own.
Correct, and as well as, because it's an internet, you can access it via the internet, you can check your account from anywhere, should you need to or want to, but so that eliminates the need of having to run to the business office and waiting on one or two people to be able to pull out your account balances and, and answer questions.
Huge improvement.
So yes, that's a huge improvement.
So the checklist thing is from DCR?
Correct, but then the voucher list is the new bills list.
The new, is how the new bills list works.
Correct.
Okay. So come next, or come August, we'll just have the voucher list?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Because we won't need anything from DCR for like this month, we had to have some of those June checks.
Yeah, there will be another, there, yes, there will be another report from Infinite Visions in the next board, board packet that will look different, and so we'll go over that one, too, but again, I think it's an improvement, for sure.
Further discussion on payment of bills, or there's a resolution?
Sorry, I have time.
All right, then read the resolution.
Sure. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the June 16, 2019 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Tom Seconded?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seera?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Saylor?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes. Disposal of surplus personal property.
And we do this twice a year, we usually do it in July and around December, if there's any district property that needs to be disposed of, primarily it's audiovisual equipment, computer equipment, et cetera, but the Board has to formally approve that we're disposing of it.
Is there any further discussion on that? All right, let's read the resolution.
Whereas the Superintendent has recommended and the Board of Education has determined that certain surplus personal property listed on the attached Exhibit 1, surplus personal property, belonging to the district is no longer needed for school purposes and should be sold, and whereas the Board of Education has determined that the sale of the surplus personal property in accordance with Section 10-22.8, 105 ILCS 5/10-22.8, at a public or private sale is in the best interest of the district. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Riverside Brookfield High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois as follows. Section 1, that the Superintendent is hereby authorized to dispose of the surplus personal property by public or private sale in a manner which is best, in the best interest of the district. Section 2, in the event that any such property remains unsold, the Superintendent may dispose of it in a manner which is in the best interest of the district. Section 3, the Superintendent shall report to the Board the item sold, the buyer and the amount received for each item. Second. So a quick question, where would these things be sold?
I think it's just the option, if we wanted to sell them or if we exposed ours, if we sell anything, but I don't think we've ever sold anything.
Yeah, we typically can't find anybody to buy them because they are so old. Occasionally, we can find someone who wants to take like something, and then will recycle all the other things for us. And so the amount that they buy the other things for is so nominal that it's just a help that they're recycling all of the other items for us.
I mean, because there was a number of Chromebooks, are they just not viable anymore?
Yes, and they're older from the original teachers that received them, as well as our pilot, and so during the pilot, we had several Chromebook carts, and so they're not longer under warranty, and they are, they're five or six years old.
I mean, that's part of the reason why they're so cheap upfront, is because Chromebooks have no residual value at the end of their life, unlike a lap, like a Dell or perhaps an MacBook or something, so.
And for example, like the monitors are over 10 years old, so we're replacing those, and we were able to get some donated to us from another school that was just looking to upgrade. So we try to be as resourceful as we can, but know that the things on the list are typically incredibly old or very obsolete.
Want to run it, and I can pick them out?
Well, part of the reason for this is that we need more storage space, so that's usually when you'll see a disposal list.
All right, any further discussion, questions?
Ms. Seera?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Saylor?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Reska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Notice of appointment of IMRF Authorized Agent.
This is a formality, we need to appoint Kristen as the new Authorized Agent for the IMRF Fund, replacing Scott.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby appoints Kristen Smithana Assistant Superintendent as the Authorized Agent for IMRF in District 208 as presented in the July 16, 2019 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Saylor?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes. Westbrook Strategic Consultants?
The district is retaining Westbrook Strategic Consultants, to serve as an independent consultant for the district. They shall perform duties necessary to assist the district, such as government relations, private consulting, and as we work with the forest reserve, zoning, permitting, anything with stormwater detention, the services will be provided on an hourly as-needed basis, so as I stated previously in my Superintendent Report. I'm asking that the Board approve the letter of engagement on not to exceed 10 hours a month unless there's a mutual agreement.
Discussion?
So we haven't had consultants in the past who built this role?
We have not. We had a construction manager in the past, this is a little something different, this is working with a consulting firm that does government or municipality projects.
So because of the talks with the zoo, we need?
Yeah, it just maybe helped us navigate some things a little better.
Okay.
And that's why the Board, my advisors on the Board, thought it would be better to do an hourly basis as needed, we may not need them.
All right.
I mean, so the district hasn't worked with Westbrook before?
This is our first time working with Westbrook.
And do we, I mean, I'm sure they, has anybody worked with them, or?
Yeah, I've worked with their primary person, the principal, he was also the interim village manager in Brookfield.
Okay.
So I do know Jay very well.
We did reference checks.
Correct.
All right, read the resolution.
Sure. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the letter of engagement with Westbrook Strategic Consultants as presented in the July 16, 2019 Board Agenda Packet. Second.
Ms. Alice.
Ms. Saylor?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Reska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seera?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. All right, DuPage West Cook Intergovernment Agreement.
This is another formality, we do have, if it's for special needs students that need to use a deaf and hard of hearing school, that's also part of the DWC, so all the members of LADZI are asked to approve this agreement, so that if we have to send any students there, there's a standing agreement.
Any discussion? Read the resolution?
We do this every year, right?
Yep.
Uh, it might be every other year.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the DuPage West Cook Intergovernmental Agreement as presented in the July 16, 2019 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Reska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seera?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Saylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Embrace DS Fee for Service Contract.
I'll let Kristen go into a little bit more of this, there was a question submitted, but we do receive reimbursements, we used to have a company called Go Solutions, and what they do is with some of our special needs students, we do, we are able to receive Medicaid reimbursement, you know, which helps offset the costs and we provide some revenue source for the district to help offset the expenditures. Kristen, I will let you speak a little bit more about Embrace.
So we're looking to switch to Embrace because that is the system that we currently use for students' IEPs, and so by using this for Medicaid reimbursement, it'll able to, yes, it'll be able to pull from some of the data that we already have in there, it's also easier to use platform, whereas before, we'd have to enter every 15-minute increment, now we can just say we met with the student for 45 minutes, as opposed from choosing 12:15 to 12:30, 12:30 to 12:45. to 12:30, 12:30, 12:45, et cetera. Also Ghost Solutions, the support staff, we felt were not very knowledgeable about the rules behind the Medicaid claims, and we know that Embrace is from doing some additional research, and so we feel that they'll be able to help us identify some additional claims that we can be making. And there was a question submitted about the fees. I talked to the CFO of LADZI and was not able to get like an average claim amount because the claims vary significantly based off of time and which service provider is being utilized. But I did, I was able to obtain the billing for the entire year and kind of look at that to try to come up with some analysis. The fees will certainly be more, but we anticipate the revenues also increasing, so that in the end, we do believe our revenues will be more than what our revenues are this year. And so we do believe that it will be helpful to switch to Embrace. Also, the 5% model is a very common fee structure because then that company is also more inclined to help us submit more claims as opposed to a company that is 95 cents per claim.
How long have we been using the Ghost Solutions?
I don't know, I believe at least past three or four, five years, yeah, I think as long as, as long as I was the principal.
So you feel like there'll be enough additional claims?
Yeah, like, because that to me seems like it's money that we could have been recouping
that we haven't done.
Correct.
Right, like is that?
Correct.
Right.
Between the, between the easier, between the, yeah, the easier process for sure, but then also the fact that they are much more knowledgeable about what can be submitted and what can't be submitted, we feel like we're missing out on some claims that we haven't been submitting in the past.
That was my thought, so you think like the past few years, we've missed some opportunities.
Yes, correct.
A lot of that is, a lot of that is processed through with LADZI, and so the new director of LADZI identified that this was an area, and so all the schools are starting to shift over to it.
So is there, is there training involved with the new software, to how we use?
Yes, that is included.
Okay.
So they will all be trained.
And is it only services, or is it also like verbal medical? Is it service-based?
It's only, yes, it's services for nursing, speech, et cetera.
Yeah, it being all in one is huge for those staff members.
Correct, yes. And the fact that you don't have to select the actual time in 15-minute increments, you can just put 30 minutes.
Right.
And when, you'll know as teachers, when a system is easier to use, you're more likely to use it if it's more convenient, so, because that's not their priority, their priority is to be with kids.
Right.
So I think that will help certainly.
Sounds good.
I think that all, that all sounds good to me too, but is there a way just to, to track it in some way? I doubt that this is a big driver one way or the other, but I mean, when we do something like this, you know, the whole logic of we think it's beneficial in every way, I mean, is it possible to track it for the next year and?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
We should know what we got last year.
We know what we got from Ghost Solutions, so we should be able to compare.
Yeah.
You know, this is one of those things that.
Special education tracking.
Will, could possibly improve our revenues, right? So these are the kinds of solutions, creative solutions that we need to look into, to make things, you know, make sure that we're keeping track of all of our pennies, right?
Yeah, that's certainly the hope.
Well, this also kind of brings up the conversation that as a board we've had in the past, whenever we have vendors or different contracts, just to get in the habit of looking at them manually or biannually when they come up, to say, are we getting the best value as a practice and going out and doing that, so. I don't know that we always do that, but again, it's something to be thinking about.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All right, read the resolution.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the Embrace DS Fee for Service Contract as presented in the July 16, 2019 board agenda packet.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, is Gina?
Ms. Reska?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Sable?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. Consolidated District Plan.
Some people hear the word consolidated, they think it's about the consolidationism, but it is not, this is just a, one plan that will.
Well, you've got the whole town all excited.
Yeah, we formally, we formally put this plan into place, and it allows us to submit all of our title grants, Title 1, Title 2, Title 3, Title 4, et cetera, so then consolidate it into one application process and one plan, correct?
Correct, one very lengthy application process.
So maybe we should change that title to Consolidated Application.
We could, this is the plan that, this is the title from.
Oh, we can't, sorry.
We could put that in parentheses when we report out.
Yeah. I'd like to commend you, Kristen, this is a very lengthy, lengthy, laborious process.
Thank you, yes.
You read most of it, you did a great job.
Because Gina really wants to read those kinds of things.
I know you do.
That's the one I didn't read, but.
So before we, so just as a, as a note, before we can submit it to the state, the board has to approve it, and then once the board approves it, we'll submit it to the state, the state has to approve it, and then we can do any additional things that we need to for the title grants.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, read the resolution.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the Consolidated District Plan as presented in the July 16, 2019 board agenda packet.
Second.
Ms. Jacobs?
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Sable?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes. Yes. Press Plus Policy Issue 101.
Press Policy Advisory Council met this afternoon, and we will provide our recommendations in the August packet. We only had like two changes from what the IASB was recommending, and they were minor changes, so we'll make sure to include those in August.
All right, this is just a first read, no action necessary.
Correct.
All right. Matters for closed session, personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, sale, lease property, pending intimate litigation, collective negotiation, school safety. Still see that there's no visitor statements.
Last bound was.
Last bound, so, no, he's, no, he's going to do. All right, discussion items, anything requested? And consideration items for future meetings? Right? Okay.
All right, resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of a public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Sable?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we are adjourned.